She has joined us. Okay, I'd like to call the city council workshop to order for January 7th, 2021. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bean.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
Back in.
Here. Uh. Next on the agenda is uh changes to our or deletions to the agenda. I'd like to add item five D, a brief discussion on Christmas lights. Are there any other items that council wishes to add to the agenda? Karen, do you have anything?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Then the agenda will be revised with the addition of item five D, discussion of Christmas lights. At this point in the meeting, we will entertain comments from the public. You wish to address the council, ask for recognition and express your or state your name and city of residence and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody who'd like to address the council at this time?
I do not see anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the first item on today's agenda is our annual review and discussion about rates for our street end license agreements. Karen, you want me just to roll with this? See, just kind of asked me if I would kind of take the lead on this because of obviously Karen and both Aaron are somewhat unfamiliar with with what we what we've got going here. And I can make this as in in depth or, you know, answer questions, but I could just give a quick overview about how we came about with these license agreements. And there were basically, I think, three components involved. Oh, yeah. Arnett, are you just adjusting something?
Yeah, I'm muting.
Okay. All right, all right. Basically, in the seventies and eighties, we had issues with the street ends. None of them had seawalls. They were just beaches. They ended up being a dumping point for garbage, dead fish walk walk while washing up on the beach. And there was no really connectivity along waterfront for what we now see as our our boardwalk. We were able to meet with adjoining property owners who had an interest in taking over the use of those street ends for their own benefit, to be perfectly honest with you, but to in exchange, we got a relatively meager, I'll admit, license agreement fee. It's based, it's really a fee that's based on the amount of the street end that they leased. It split fifty fifty between the adjoining property owners. The city in return was able to get most of our street ends installed with sheet piling. Almost all the street ends did not have any of that prior to these license agreements. In addition to this sheet piling of the agreement state that they're responsible for all maintenance, including installation and upkeep on boardwalks. And they have to keep the entire their entire private property open to public use as a condition of a license agreement. So that's really kind of where we got to where we're at today. A few of the street ends on the business side on the east side of the river did not have boardwalks, primarily looking at Francis Street. And the council at that time agreed to enter into a similar agreement as long and at that time that that street end did not was not did not have a seawall. Again, that was just a just a beach area. And again, it was it was tough to keep boats from pulling in and out of there. Pacing it, taking care of the garbage and maintenance, et cetera. So so that Mason or Francis Street Street End, you can see a split between adjoining property owners. In exchange for that, the city got the street end completely sheet she piled and have continued with that agreement since it was originally entered in. And I don't know the dates when these agreements agreements originally entered in. One comment, as you know, we don't lease out Hoffman Street End. That's where we have the small city parking lot and the boat slips. And this is something that maybe a lot of people aren't aware of. Maybe some people are, but that's that parking lot did not exist. That was just a street end and there was an old wooden seawall, if I recall, and a few boat slips at the end. Between Hoffman Street Street End and Wick's Park was actually a building for many, many, many years. Eventually purchased by the Johnson family from Coral Gables. Most recent occupancy in this old building was a candle factory. Unfortunately, it burned down. Candle factory burned. At that time, the city approached Mike Johnson and we were able to purchase that property for a very, I think it was like thirty thousand dollars or something. And his only condition was that there'd be a monument on that property honoring his father. So if you see a no, just out of the corner between Wick's Park and the boat slips there, you'll see a monument there, you know, dedication dedicating just a memorial type monument to Mike Johnson's dad, Thomas Johnson. And that's why that's there. So that gives you an idea why that street end wasn't was never leased out to adjoining property owners. Even when they, in fact, at least that that agreement didn't even wasn't even in place when the Johnson family still owned that property. Eventually, when we we got a grant to sheet wall and rebuild Wick's Park, we then continued that seawall to hook up with the seawall behind the Mermaid Restaurant. And at that time, we put in the existing docks that are there. The street end leases or agreements on the west side of the river came at a later time. Again, with the exception of Interlocken, the primary interest on the city was that we were able to transfer the cost of expensive sheet wall piling at the base of Perryman Street, which was becoming very it was becoming quite, there was an erosion issues there from the high water in the eighties. And so we got this, you know, so that lease that street end benefits the two adjoining property owners. Again, they put in the seawall, they maintain it further headed down river to the north towards Mount Baldy, Interlocken. And then there's a strip of Interlocken and then along Park Street to the museum. It's called South Museum or the museum on the on the description on the location there. And again, we ran into the same thing. We had Park Street that was threatened to be washed into the river because of a high water erosion issues. And so we had a private public relationship done with the property owners to install the the seawall along there at their cost. They maintain it. Not only that, all the street ends they maintain and we have insurance certificates naming the insurance or the city has additional insurance on their on their liability insurance for those locations that are licensed. So that kind of Cook Park is a little different animal. Again, it was the same problem. The cost of over two hundred feet is sheet piling. Installation of higher end, more expensive docks. Maintenance of of the property. And then so a different type of agreement was worked out with Butler Enterprises as the adjoining property owner on both sides of which of Cook Park. Singapore Yacht Club is a tenant of Butler Enterprises. Who's actual docks, you know, they actually do the renting out of those docks. And so we, the city escaped having to put in a seawall because again, we were losing prop park property due to the high water in the late eighties. And so we have a separate agreement with Butler Enterprises that it looks like that expires at the end of twenty twenty two. So that's kind of my, you know, the information I can give you on these leases. Aaron went to and put in the the map. That's new. And I think that's a for a location map of the the license agreements. And you know, I'll leave I'll leave it at that and open it up to any other council comment.
Mayor.
Yes.
Just a question. You you mentioned that the city retains public rights to those street ends. Should I infer that that means if a resident or a visitor wants to go to say the end of Francis Street and drop a line to fish, or if somebody wants to try to slide a kayak into the water at that spot, allowed to?
With the property owner, I would say no unless it's given permission by the adjoining property owner. What I meant by public use is primarily the boardwalk.
Oh.
Okay. And I think those leases, I think those agreements actually state, we don't have, I don't think, the actual wording of the agreement. So remember, right? It's they're like fifteen fourteen feet or fifteen feet from this from the seawall or the river's edge inland. And and that's the limitation on on the the strip of land that they are leasing from from the city. Or licensed agreements to use for their own their own use.
Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, going back to the one on Cook Park on either side of that, is that the same the the same requirement like further north is that in order to get your street in, then you have to keep the boardwalk open?
Correct. They the the primary purpose was to establish the boardwalk open to the public and to put in some type of vehicle where the private property owners, because all those docks, all those all that land other than the street ends and 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 Cook Park is private property. And it was, there was actually a time that there were gates up at the along the docks at the at Singapore Yacht Club. They would actually close those on weekends when there were more people in town. There were actually gates that they closed. And this was in the sixties and into the seventies. And they were selective on when Singapore Yacht Club was selected when they were the Butler was selected when they would let people traverse up and up and down the docks for a period of time. So this was really the the rationale behind entering into the these license agreements was to establish the the boardwalk, which now, you know, originally it just ran from Butler Street behind the Butler, then stopped at Mason Street behind the Coral Gables Coffee Shop. Because past that was an old Marina. It really didn't have accessible docks or a boardwalk for, you know, people to walk up and down. That changed again when the the Johnson family bought that and had ownership of that for quite a while. And we were able to work with them regarding the opening of boardwalk. And then that was followed with Larry Gammons. And Sharon Shanty Shanahan's daughter, his his name escapes me right now. I I know him well. I just can't I can't remember, you know. So they owned it. And then we were able to continue that that boardwalk in that relationship with keeping that open. Another sidelight, we did have a issue that I think again, illustrated the importance of these agreements because that that property was bought the property other than the Mermaid Building, Dockside Marketplace Building. That's actually three different condominium units, I believe, in that stretch of the block. The DeVos family owns that. And and they put the kibosh right after they purchased that. They didn't want the exposure, the liability exposure for people walking walking up and down the boardwalk. We immediately revoked their agreement to rent the dock at the end of Hoffman Street, which they valued because it's the deepest and the longest dock, so they could put in some of their larger vessels in there. And eventually things worked out fine. And it hasn't been an issue since 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 that. So.
Mayor, I have a quick question. This is Garn.
Yeah.
Out of out of curiosity, so the difference in terms, obviously, the ones that we have every year, we we talk about them. And then we have several, one, two, three, four, which are on five year agreements. I'm just curious why the difference?
Uh, that's a good question. Which one there? Five?
Last ones. Solberg, it looks like La Fort, Weingart, Truesdale, and Butler Enterprises. Just curious.
I think those are at least Solberg, La Fort, Truesdale were later, came about later.
Okay.
Possibly because they, I'm just speculating, Garnett. It's been a while. But my thought, my my memory serves me right, is that there was more expense in putting the seawall in. And they did not have them for a commercial purpose, hence could not recoup some of their investment back.
Yeah, okay.
And if you look at what's below Neil La Fort's property and his and his along the river there. And towards the Pump House, the museum there. It's it's quite a quite a length of seawall. And again, they put in it their expense. They maintained it. Again, that's my recollection of why those were a little bit different. Butler Enterprises was, I think, similar to that only because of the large expense that was put into Cook Park after after the high water of the eighties. That was an old wooden seawall in there. Yep, we were losing land. You know, it was just it was just washing into the river. So again, they put in the seawall. They had to they put in all newer docks. The agreement does state if that lease does not those the ownership of those docks would revert back to the city. I believe that's part of the agreement, actually. They put in a sprinkling system. They sprinkle it. They maintain it. They cut the grass. They pick up the leaves, pick up the sticks. Obviously, there's an offset that you see there for their maintenance. That was put in, I think, a little bit later in in the lease after after a while. I think they came with us and that was that was worked out. You'd see that all the leases are based on a most of the fees are based on just an increase based on some some factor. Annual rate of inflation or or something like that. It's adjusted on that as opposed to being
The CPI.
negotiated every year. Consumer Price Index. Okay, thanks. Or something like that. How would you do? No, I see.
Yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions. So are all of the street ends shown on this map?
All the street ends that run into the river, you know, that 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 into the river.
For instance.
Would assume so.
Uh, then the other end of Butler Street, I believe that's a street.
With X, yeah, yeah.
Down by Noonum.
Right, right. That street end, the adjoining property owners on both sides is the Johnson family. Similar situation with the high water. Actually, it was, I think, when he built that home, which was about the same time, if my memory serves me right. Same idea. Use it for his personal use. Fill it all in, put the seawall in, maintain it, use it for his personal use. There came a time when he just said, I'm not going to use this for my personal use anymore. I will continue to maintain it. I'm not going to build a city or anything for putting it in the seawall. I but since I'm not using it, it's a view shed, whatever you want. You know, the city accepted that.
So is it a is it a street end or not?
Yes, I would think that that is a street end. And I would think if someone walked up to the end of that street end and put in a fishing pole there or launched a kayak, that they would be within their rights. I don't know how happy the adjoining property owner would be. But that that is a city street. And Butler Street does run all the way to the to the river there is my and it shows on the map that way, too.
So North Butler Street?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, Mayor, my question.
In addition to, and I'll bring one other one up, too, while you're on that, I'm sorry, is Noonum Street actually dead ends into the into the extension of Goshorn Creek? A similar situation is that at the time, the the Batches family who built the house where Mr. Aworth now resides approached the city, build it. They actually have a garage on one side of that street and their house is on the other. Noonum Street kind of intersects that property. Again, they rebuilt that whole street and they put in the seawall. They did that. I can't really recall when or why the the lease payments stopped on that street end. I'm not sure if there's a dock there that extends over that street end. I I think that one just you know, I I don't know the answer why it was, you know, eventually just just dropped. In fact, I don't know if we ever charged for that one, to be honest with you.
Mayor, who holds the insurance on some of those street ends? Then if it's, is it the city holds the insurance on that or is that?
No, the adjoining property owner. Okay. So for instance,
I'm talking about the ones that are not currently leasing it like the Johnsons.
Okay, then those are on the cities. They're part of the city's insurance. You know, program.
So when you're not.
Just considered like any other park or any other vacant city property or or street. So if someone wandered down there, you know, and for some reason drowned or fell off or something, then we get sued. Yeah, our insurance would cover it. Likewise, if something happened off the retroboat docks, we could sue. That insurance would apply first.
Hey, Mayor, one more question. Thanks for this. I mean, it's really helpful. To your mind, is is there a spot that would lend itself to the city creating an amenity where people, not only residents, but visitors with with personal watercraft, you know, more and more people now come to town with kayaks, inflatable paddle boards, you name it. Would there be a place that would lend itself to that kind of amenity for people to launch small craft? Because we currently, we don't even have a proper boat launch with Spear Street covered with the Hescos.
Well, I of the existing street ends, maybe Butler Street. But again, it's a seawall, so you'd have to drop something over the seawall. You know, I I think once we get, and I do believe personally, I believe we'll be able to get the Spear Street boat launch boat launch opened, if not this summer in another year, you know, in in twenty twenty two. That's a pretty that's a pretty good site for that type of activity. And you know, then we've got, we've got, you know, Coughlin Park that maybe could be expanded to that a little bit. So
Mr. Mayor.
You know, I guess that's about the only thing I I can really, really, you know, come up come up with from from that use. Now, well, that'll come at a different time. Keep that thought in mind, Scott, because it may very well come up when we have our discussion about the Doomgrass property next week.
Mr. Mayor.
Chris.
Going back to what you said about Coughlin Park, we own from where the the slips, the new dock that we put in, then the city has the next two slips that we lease to.
It's it might be four slips. It might be it might be two docks and four four boat wells or boat slips.
I think that's right.
Said Ken, you and I looked at that not too long ago.
That's that's correct. I believe there were four four slips in there. We wrapped the four.
So that could actually be following up on what Scott said. That could be
Correct.
potential place.
Yeah, you could you could pull pull something like that away.
That, I mean, that's a, yeah, that's a very interesting idea. I mean, I think a lot of us have seen what Douglas has done over in Wade's Bayou. It's it's quite nice. And you know, frankly, it's a safer way, the way they've got the kayak launch set up there. It's a safer way for people to get in and out of the water. So I think it's great. We've got some options.
Yeah, the thing we have to be a little bit careful about there, I think, in discussions you would want to have with Sergeants Marine is I think they look at that as a little bit of an income source that gives them some incentive to keep their boardwalk open. Okay. Between Griffith Street and Butler Street, again, that's a long stretch of private property. Those boat those boat slip owners pay a lot of money for those slips. And so there, you gotta have some give and take in there, I think. Because that then is the key in linking Coughlin Park all the way to the chain ferry. Oh, but it's certainly discussions that council is so inclined to have, we can have.
So, sorry.
Go ahead, Garn.
No, you're good, Holly.
I was just gonna ask, do we have a standardized process or criteria for obtaining the street ends?
Joining property owners have first kind of a first right of refusal, I guess. There was a and I can only recall one little incident on that, and it came this year. And that was on the Perryman Street End. Where it was a it was a I would think more of a misunderstanding. The lease was on the south end. It was a lease was in the name of Kathy Wilson, who owns part of the Riverwatch condo. Again, the history standard, the the building there south or north of the chain ferry. Okay, that that thing is actually a condo. But the condo owners consist of two individuals on all those various condo elements there. When that street end lease was offered, Herc Wise was the other, you know, mostly you probably know Herc and Krista. They 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 actually built that building. They weren't interested in working anything out. They didn't. They weren't interested in that. So Kathy and Frank Wilson, who owned the bottom half, okay, on a kind of kitty corner from that, she also owns Beachway Inn, the Beachway Hotel. Okay. And so it just kind of gravitated to her as the adjoining property owner. Her name, though, even the legal, I would say, adjoining property owner to the south is Riverwatch Condominium Association, which we'll see now the leases in that name instead of her personally. So that was like, well, she was a joining property owner, but but not really because she only owned, she was a condo unit owner. Her joining property was across the road, but.
So Mark, quick question on this map that we're seeing up to the north on the west side of the river. There's the very furthest dots aren't, they're just they're they're not filled in. And I'm curious. they're just, they're, they're not, um, filled in, and I'm curious why that is. Are those like waiting to be completed?
I'll defer to the graphic artist.
I actually left those just slightly different because that's the only one that's not actually a street end. It's along a street, so I just wanted to kind of make it just slightly different, looking to note that it was somehow different than all of the rest of them.
Okay, so it's a seawall.
But it's, but it's still leased by the city.
I believe that that property is city property that was part of, attached to the, to the, uh, the original, uh, pump house building there that, okay? And that strip of land is owned by the city.
Got it. Okay, yeah, right across from the park. Yeah, I got it. Okay.
Oh, right along that real narrow spot there between Van Dawson and when then it opens up by the pump house in the Mount Baldy parking lot.
Got it. I got it. Okay.
So Mark, Mark, is this, is there a written, is in, is this a written policy? Is there any written policy on these street ends?
I have a contract that Jeff just sent us for the twenty twenty-one that'll go before you at the next council meeting that gets renewed every year.
But no, but not, nothing more than that than, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how this all works, so.
Well, it would make sense that if it's first right of refusal on property owners, Holly, I mean, sorry, Mark. I mean, I would think that if it is first right of refusal with the property owners, more often, more likely than not, they're going to want to renew that contract. And if they didn't, they'd probably notify the city. That would be my assumption.
So in the contract, does it explain, you know, what, you know, what, uh, public rights are or what, I I don't know, like, what is, how is it explained to the people that have the street lease, what their rights are, what what they can and can't do? Or, I mean, I would assume that that's in that document. Is that correct?
Right, I think when we get the information for Monday's meeting, there'll be agreements, the wording in the agreements. Uh, I'll, again, Aaron's and staff put that information together. I would, I guess she's got one right there.
Okay.
So, uh.
All right, bear with me, I'm gonna resize it.
Yeah. There you can see the fifteen feet inward of the land.
So, so each year, this contract goes to, uh, Jeff Sluggett, who reviews it and makes alterations to this kind of generic license. Then, once you guys approve the amount that is to be increased, which is spelled out in this contract each year. Once you approve that, I'll update each of these contracts and a letter that goes to each of the licensees. Um, so they sign this agreement and we sign this agreement. Um, but it's a, you know, eleven-page document, basically, that spells out everything.
And then the city gets a check and an updated certificate of liability insurance. It's part of the procedure.
Okay. Fascinating.
Another question, do we know if we're charging a fair market rate? I don't, I don't know. Do other, I'm just curious maybe how other cities might handle this or?
That's actually spelled out in the contract that the increase, the rate of increase is to go based on the CPI.
Okay.
So every year it increases by whatever that CPI index is.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, and and again, we, we entered, yeah, we, I'm sorry to cut you off, Holly.
No, no, that's my que- I understand the CPI increase. I'm just wondering how we set, how we set the prices.
I think we took.
This goes way back and.
Yeah. It was, it was based on discussions about their, uh, capital improvement and ongoing costs. And it was set at that factor adjusted by the CPI. Now, there may come a time when that needs to be reviewed, to be perfectly honest with you. Boat docks are, boat slips are, you know, quite a bit higher now than they, you know, the fees they're charging are, you know, quite a bit higher and and it has, has the base fee kept up with with it. I don't, you know, I can't address that. Again, we always went back to, we really were not interested in rocking the boat too much to maintain the boat, the boardwalk. As we always look at that as most critical attraction we have, at least I feel it's the most critical attraction we have in our, I know, you know, east side of the river or town.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Yes, Chris.
Another question, uh, to follow up and and, uh, probably don't have the answer for it right now. But if for some reason, uh, say we did decide to raise the rate and the adjoining property holders did not want to continue with the, um, street end, then at that point, could they close off their property?
I would assume so. It's private property. They control it. They own it.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just, I guess I'm just trying for some clarification. If somebody is not leasing a street end and it's their adjacent property, if they're not paying that, you know, whatever, you know, two thousand dollars, um, or for a private property owner, it's about twelve hundred dollars a year. If they're not paying that, um, we just, we just don't collect that money? I don't know. I mean, why are some people paying it and why are some people not paying it?
Uh, you're looking at two specific instances of this, I believe, which would be Butler Street and Noonam.
Yeah, I was just curious.
And to the best of my knowledge, it was the fact that we're not going to use this, at least on Butler, I'm not going to use this for any personal use, okay? But I'm willing to maintain it, cut the grass, build the seawall across there and leave it at that. I I do believe he paid for it like a year or two. And then he basically says, if you want to take it back, take it back, I guess. I mean, he just said, I didn't, I don't see why I'm gonna, I need to pay this, because I'm not gonna use it. And I just built all this infrastructure here for the city at no expense, so.
I'm just curious what the city's options.
The city's option was probably let's let the sleeping dog lie at that particular point. And I think a similar thing happened at the end of Noonam.
Could we sell the property if there was a piece of property?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, give me the question. Again, I think that's more of a question the city manager or the attorneys can answer. My understanding is that's considered a street. Okay, so, uh, and the only thing you can do is turn it back to the adjoining property owners for zero cost. You, that's called vacation, vacating properties because they're a, uh, platted street. Um, so you can't, you can't sell a platted street. You can only vacate it. And the people who get it are the adjoining property owners.
Okay, I was just wanting.
Yeah, we ran into that last year, if you remember, at the, uh, the curve of Culver and Lake Street. That prop, that Culver Street actually went right up the hill, right through someone's deck and everything and intersected, uh, kind of up there by those condos. And then through various actions and requests and discussions, it was determined to vacate that property, the adjoining property owners. Once it gets vacated, goes back to adjoining property owners. It does come, it does come on the tax rules. Again, Karen, I don't want to steal your thunder. Been through the vacation several times.
If you can't see it, Mr. Mayor, Cindy has her hand up as well.
Okay. Well, Cindy?
Yeah, I know this because we recently went through a street vacation. And if it's a street end within twenty-five meters of wa- of body of water, it can only be vacated by order of Circuit Court. So the street ends are very difficult to vacate. Just, just a little bit of information.
Oh, that's helpful. Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Chris.
Uh, following up on, on, uh, Lauren and Holly, um, so when the, when the property was, uh, when the seawall was put in, uh, the gentleman, and I have no idea who even owns it, I've heard the name, but don't know him at all. Uh, they paid for their lease for a while, but now they have said, you can take this back. We don't want to have a lease. So if that's the case, then, uh, I don't want, I don't want to cause a riot here, but would that be a place where we could do another, um, dinghy dock?
Possibly, yeah, I mean, you know. Yeah. It is possible. It's not a, it's usable waterfront down in that corner there now because the, with the high water. Typically, that's a, a very low shallow area. So, you know, once the water goes back down to, you know, I think normal letters, no, normal levels, it'd be difficult to put anything in there other than something with a very shallow draft. Well, the dinghies are inflatable, certainly would, would be able to utilize that, so.
And Mayor, one more.
Again, then, and again, I don't know the legalities of it because the property on, on the one side, on the Noonam Street side of there, may have some riparian rights that run out there. I don't know, but it's possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just one, just to put a bow around it, Mayor. I mean, I, I think this is a great conversation because, you know, we're a tourist town, uh, our top two attractions are the beach and the harbor. Um, I think we've absolutely got it right that we're, you know, we're, we're very focused on keeping that open public boardwalk between, uh, Coughlin Park and Wicks Park. Um, I, I think there's an opportunity, though, for us to take it further, create more dinghy docks, uh, other places where the public can get on the water, access the water with something other than than a yacht. Um, so I think, uh, that this is part of a bigger discussion, but I think this is a great, uh, primer on, um, uh, what we, what our options are. So thanks for for giving us a brief on.
Uh, a- a- again, I wouldn't take everything as gospel. It's, it's been a few years since we, we put a lot of this together, but it, it comes up fairly regularly. Uh, every few years, we get into a, you know, a, a discussion about this. We, we Cliff Bloom from, and Sluggett, Jeff Sluggett did a good job in rewriting these, these agreements. I'm guessing five or six years to go, years ago to comply with some, uh, I think new laws that were passed relating to, you know, these types of properties that about, you know, uh, inland streams and waterways. So I know that they've been heavily involved in with this process.
Mayor.
So, go ahead, Holly.
Sorry.
It's all good.
I would agree with what Scott said. Um, I really appreciate you bringing, bringing your knowledge and and helping us learn about this. Um, I just had one question. Is, at the end of Water Street, uh, just past Lucy, where Willow Park is, is that a street end as well, or is that part, just part of the park?
I believe that with some of the discussions between the adjoining property or the adjoining, you know, uh, Harrington Retroboats on the one side, the fire just noted that that was legally determined to be a street end from our attorneys. Cindy may know about, I think Cindy would probably be more knowledgeable on that to me, but I think we did ask for that determination. Is that correct, Cindy?
That's correct. It is a street end.
So should we go ahead and add, add to the map these additional street ends, even if, I mean, even if they're not under contract or, I don't know, should we be recognizing them on this map?
Well, I think they're, you know, they're planted out on the maps. So, you know, so I,
So, so.
Anything you want with this, you know, this is something that, 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 and go ahead.
The map is, is showing where we have leases?
Approximate location, yes.
Okay, so it's not necessarily showing every street end, it's just showing every street end with the lease. Is that, is that?
I think that's fair.
Okay.
Yes, it's just the street end licenses that are shown on this map.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Okay.
So Mark, I'm sorry, I'm gonna belabor this one more time because I'm gonna channel, I'm gonna channel the spirit of RJ Peterson, God rest his soul. Yeah, I'm curious, I'm curious why the boardwalk, um, then stops at Coughlin Park and doesn't continue on. RJ, boy, he would pull my ear about this. We should have a boardwalk that extends all the way around. I see Ken smiling. And I always wondered why, why did it stop there? Obviously, there's gotta be private property rights, but I'm just curious on.
Yeah, I think it was private, private property rights, you know, until, until the Coughlin property came under, you know, uh, you know, became Coughlin property because Fitz and Thelma Coffin wrote a check for one point four million dollars, paid a Brandy King and his dad for that property, by the way. At that time, then, the, the city could utilize it as incorporated into the, into the, into the boardwalk. Until King, the King family bought that property, uh, it was part of the, uh, was a general offices for the Lloyd, the, the Pie Company, which was owned by Rich Products at the end. It was a former fruit exchange is what it's actually was originally built for. And that, and behind there was actually some commercial fishing docks also. Rube Sewers boats were kept there, but that was not developed. That was just, it was almost a dumping area, I remember, a lot of broken concrete ripped up from the streets were put down there. It's pretty good fishing was down there, but there weren't any, there weren't any docks or anything like that along there. That, I don't bore you on this stuff, but Fitz Coughlin told me the reason why they made that donation is that they used to sail their, their, they used to bring their sailboat down from Eldine's, uh, which is now Eldine's Marina, and now, and they would pull it up into the weeds there and tie it off a tree. And they would do that every Sunday, and he was so happy that no one to kick them out of there. Good story, really, so.
That's great. Cool.
All right, I hate to, you know, I don't mean to, you know, dominate the discussion, but we've been through this quite a few times over the years, so.
No, that was.
And we're good as knowledge if you can at least try to share it, right?
Yeah, thank you.
And now it's for, and now it's recorded for posterity sake, so there you go.
Thanks. And there's probably gonna be some mistakes of the, you know, someone will come up with, Mark, you missed that or you embellished that one a little bit too much, which is certainly possible. Okay, thank you for putting up with me on this one. Uh, gazebo rental policy, Karen?
Yeah, so, uh, in creating the new website, I was looking at the gazebo rental policy. Couple people have started requesting, um, that they rent it, they want to run it for weddings. In the past, there has been a restriction that you could only use the rental company was the name of the company. It's since sold and it's now called Alpine Rental. I do not know what the original reason was for why that restriction was in place. But one of the people who had rented it and due to COVID, it got kicked off, and now she's inquiring again, is gonna have her wedding at the SCA and wants to know if she can use Taylor Rental for Coughlin Park. And I guess my question is, since I can't track down an initial reason why there was a restriction to only use the rental company, would it be okay to expand our rental policy to include either Alpine Rental or Taylor Rental? That's basically my question.
Okay, all right. Ken, maybe, maybe you can know a little bit more about that, since you've been a lot of, about a lot of projects there.
I just have a little bit of insight from running the Venetian Festival. Uh, we've always used, uh, Taylor Rental for, uh, tents and other equipment. Uh, they're a great company. They do a good job. They have quality products and, and they clean things up on time. So I certainly endorse the idea of including them in the list. And I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure why we picked any, any rental company. I don't know what the criteria were, but what I just said about Taylor, I think, uh, would apply to probably a number of other companies as well.
Yeah, and I can add that I have used the rental company for the last couple of years for Glow in the Park, and I, I know why they would be on the list. They are absolutely top-notch. They do an exceptional job. Their logistics management is above and beyond just amazing. So it could be they were just selected for that reason of, you know, whatever, but I just wonder if we still need to have that restriction in place.
Where, where does that appear in this agreement?
It does not, actually. It's somewhere in the agreement, it says you have to use one. It does not, actually. It's somewhere in the agreement. It says you have to use one of our approved rental companies, but there's an email exchange that went back and forth between the former clerk and the bride in question. She had asked if she could use Taylor and the response was basically council's very set in that it only be the rental company. But that was, you know, well over a year or two ago.
Erin, may I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, so you, obviously you're well versed in, in events. You, you've done your fair share. What would be the advantage or I don't, why would a city specify who you would use as a rental company? What?
Well, I spoke with Robin Allison, who's a friend. She used to own the rental company. She just recently sold it to Alpine Rental out of Grand Rapids. She said that the city originally approached her about having her be the vendor. And I think it was just mainly because she was exceptional, but I, Cindy, maybe can tell me more or Peter, Cindy, go ahead. You know, more.
The reason that they specified the rental company was because they didn't want people bringing their picnic tables and chairs from home and making it look like some kind of a garage sale. But I don't see any reason not to expand the list. But that was the, that was the purpose of having that clause in there to kind of control the, the look. Because that's going to be in your park and other people will be in your park.
So, go ahead. Go, Chris.
So in going back to that, the way it worded is that it has to be an approved vendor. Would maybe one way to look at this is come up with the reasons how you become an approved vendor instead of simply naming only two. It just seems that it needs to be a little more open process and, and the important part is we put in the restrictions of who can be approved.
I could certainly through the new website add a form to apply to become a vendor. And then anybody else, any other company in the area. I, I don't know of another company other than those two in this area that really serve kind of this specific need, but we could certainly run it through the website if you wanted to have it be a apply for approval kind of situation.
Just a thought. It could be.
Yeah.
I think some of our past discussions with vendors were the ones who were getting someone who was responsible enough to erect tents and not drive their stakes through our sprinkling system. Or who had the wherewithal to drive stakes to the blacktop at Wicks Park parking lot and knew how to remove them and fill them in without ripping up the parking lot. I think that had a lot to do with some of, some general discussion.
Yeah, I did speak with Scott about this and he said, he's, he's had both companies obviously have used because, you know, Venetian uses Taylor and I've been using the rental company. I think for him it was, the important thing was that he would be noticed in enough time to turn off the sprinklers so that if they drive any equipment on the grounds, they wouldn't tear up the park. So that could have something to do with it as well.
So, Mr. Mayor and Erin, I would think that there are other cities who probably have these same, similar type of vendor agreements. And rather than recreating a wheel, we might want to reach out to our colleagues like in South Haven or elsewhere who do this type of rental and see what kind of a, an agreement they have up that we can copy. I would, I would think that it would, you know, I don't, I don't know if we'd have any more than two vendors, but off the top of my head, I think of Martha's Vineyard over in Grand Rapids. I know that they do, they cater quite a few of the events, the wedding events specifically at the SCA. And they're a license, they're a vendor. They also would probably set up for a wedding and I, so I think it would, it might be just a matter of putting out a request for vendors to apply, I guess, to be on a list.
Either that or you could just put in the agreement that the, the vendor has to meet council approval rather than going through a lot of expense and work and that type of thing. It's just part of the approval process.
I think there's a provision in the event agreement with the city that calls for the event manager and other vendors to meet with the city staff, including the DPW. I know we did that every year for the Venetian Festival. So I think we should attack it from that standpoint as well. So either they're approved, they need to come in and have a meeting with Scott to go over the, you know, the potential issues that there might be in the park.
Yeah, so we got to kind of zero in on this. We've got, we're going in, we have two directions going. One is should we add Taylor Rental to the list so this lady can plan her, her wedding reception? And two, what do we do going forward with other vendors? So, I guess, Bill, we need, we would probably need a motion to, to change the agreement.
I don't think so because you don't actually need to change the agreement. You just need to change my ability to tell her she can use Taylor because right now it does not specify who the companies are.
Oh, it just says user rental.
It just says that you have to use when approved by the city. So, so long as you all approve that I extend Taylor as an option, I think we'd be covered.
They're already doing it in a lot of instances.
Well, this is specifically to the gazebo, not to the park. So if someone wants to do an event in the park, we don't restrict it. But if they want to rent specifically the gazebo, we were, in the past have restricted it to the rental company.
For the exception of Venetian.
Well, but Venetian is the whole park, not just the gazebo. This is, this, this form is specific to the Coughlin Park gazebo rental for people to have like weddings. And they can set up chairs and things and in the application there's specifics about exactly where they're allowed to put the chairs and it spells out. It's, it's in your packet, but it spells out all the details of, you know, they have to clean up and they have to have insurance and they can't have alcohol and they can't rope it off and they can't this and that. But the main thing is this specific bride is looking to request it again. And so the question has come up, may she use Taylor Rental? And I can't think of any reason why she shouldn't be able to use them because they're a perfectly reputable vendor and that's who she's using at the SCA. So it'd be more convenient for her.
Yes. Chris.
Just to open another can of worms, Erin, did you say that we have a specific approval for gazebo, the gazebo, but not for any of our other parks? So they could use?
No, no, I, I was, that was, I didn't, I was not well spoken when I said that. This specific application is for someone to rent just the gazebo.
Okay, thanks.
Separate from that, we also have an event application which does have a whole bunch of requirements, but that I've found I do not see anywhere it says you may only use one rental company over another.
Thank you.
Okay, so what do we want to do with this? To me, it's kind of a, we just want let Taylor go, approve Taylor and make a decision later if we want to change this specific, it's kind of silly just to have.
Yeah, I, I don't know why we would have the restriction for part of the park, but not the whole park. Seems like we could probably just allow two vendors, but, and if someone else wants to run it through, through you guys for approval, I guess.
Well, I think that's a simple way to go about it.
I, I don't think we should come, come back to city council every time a vendor wants to be approved. Strategically have one of our staff empowered to qualify vendors and approve them administratively.
Good enough. That's, that's fine with me. You know, between city, the city hall staff and Scott, they should be able to and make a decision on what's best. Basically what is in place for every other venue in the city other than the gazebo.
Yep. And then my only other question is because I do have two requests to preserve the gazebo and obviously we're still under COVID restrictions. My plan was to allow them to request it, put the submission in for the date and then go based on public health policy. If COVID says they can't do it, then they can't do it. But if council has a reason that we shouldn't accept them at all, I certainly now would be a good time to let me know that.
Yeah, that's what we're doing at Isabel's. I mean, we have people reaching out to us for reserving the atrium. And we're certainly reserving the date for them, but, you know, we're just, we're, we're all keeping abreast of what's happening with the restrictions and we'll notify them as such if we have to change the plans. So we're upfront with them about that. Okay, so Mark, if I can ask it, I'm sorry, if I can ask another question. This, this prompted me. I wondered if we have a similar type of agreement with the, the Van Shell or the gazebo at Wicks Park?
Not that I have found.
I think that just falls under a special event permit. Come in and, and get permission to use the gazebo, let's say for a wedding or something like that. I'm not so, is that in their schedule of fees for, for rental of that gazebo? It might be, but.
I haven't seen it.
I don't think so, Mark.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think the other one that I am aware of since I've been at the city with that caveat, because there's a lot that I do not know, but that I have found so far, Coughlin Park gazebo is the only one we rent out for money for like a wedding or something like that. I haven't found any similar, anything, any application or policy or anything that relates to the Wicks Park gazebo.
I mean, I, I do know that Sabab writes up an, an event application every year for all their events, Music in the Park. And I'm pretty sure there's no fee associated with that.
Yeah, I mean, we've had a lot of different types of events down there that I know we reviewed special event applications for. So moving forward, unless there's some disagreement, it looks like to simplify this whole thing, we just let Taylor Rental be on the list for Coughlin Park.
Right, you just made some young woman's day.
You know, is, is that, unless we're, you know.
No, I, wouldn't you think that if another, if somebody else came forward and they had a different company, we would have them apply or at least, yeah.
Be reasonable about it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Does that work for you, Erin?
That does. Thank you, yes.
Okay, moving on, a couple of quick items. The bequest from the Arnold L. Schaefer Trust is, is Karen, she's still on board here?
I'm still here.
All right.
The day before we left for Christmas holiday, we got a, a check for $10,000 in the mail. And it was a bequest from the Arnold Schaefer Trust, revocable trust. It was for the specific purpose of dredging the harbor. And so I, I sent off a, a note to the mayor that we got this and we'll handle it when we get back from holiday. And so anyway, the mayor says, I wonder if they'd let us use it for the milfoil. So, so we asked and, and the successor trustee who lives here in town said yes. And if you'll indulge me, I, I didn't know Mr. Schaefer and so I, I did a little research about him. And I'd like to share it with you unless, unless one of you knew him well and want to interrupt me. Mr. Schaefer was born in 1931. He was a graduate of Miami of Ohio. After he got out of school, he was drafted. He went into the Navy during the end of the Corian War. He served aboard the destroyer US Gatling, which protected aircraft carriers from enemy submarines. After he got out of the service, he settled in Chicago. Was a mechanical engineer. He worked in sales for the United States Railway. And he also studied architecture. He refurbished several old small apartment buildings which were originally built for the 1893 Chicago World's Fair. Mr. Schaefer and his late wife Gretchen made a visit to Sagatuck one Thanksgiving weekend. And they thought the downtown looked like a movie set. So they decided to buy a cottage on Elizabeth Street, which they restored. And later on in 2000, Mr. Schaefer bought a three bay barn in Douglas. And he transformed that into his new home. Both the cottage and the, the barn, which is now a home, have both been on the Historical Society's walking tour. Mr. Schaefer was a gifted woodworker. You'll see the, the picture there of a model he built of the big pavilion. He built this for the 2009 Historical Society's exhibit summertime. It's a one-eighth scale model of the big pavilion. The seven arches making up the roof were built from matchsticks, which he glued one piece at a time, which I think is quite a feat. Mr. Schaefer died last summer in July. He was 83 years of age. He survived by his partner of 17 years, Rosemary Nielsen and her family. Correspondence with the successor trustee of his estate, Julie Kohler. She said that she thought Arnie would be very pleased at the immediate impact his gift will have in treating the milfoil in the harbor this year. So that's, that's what I learned about him and and that's his bequest to use it for the harbor.
We don't really need to take any formal actions.
No, there's no action.
Other than sign a form that the mayor would sign in behalf of the city acknowledging acceptance of the check. I'd like to kind of redo this whole thing at the council meeting also just for, for the public, Karen, if you don't mind. Your comments.
I will.
Any questions from council? We can, we can air appropriate accolades at Monday's council meeting. It's, it's a great gift. Next item, this is really came up from Chris, Christmas lady. With the decision, why don't we turn off the Christmas lights in Sagatuck? Another discussion every January, so. Go ahead, Chris.
Yesterday was Epiphany and traditionally that's the time when a lot of Christmas decorations go down. Scott had contacted me about, were we trying to coordinate the lights in the street along with the tree and the city lights? I said, I had no clue. The, I've had several people say leave the, the street lights in the trees on through the fourth, Valentine's Day. And then take the Christmas ones down when we normally do. It, it's, it's everybody. I don't have one way or another. He did want to do it while the weather was nice.
But last year, didn't we leave the, the, the lights on the trees like through Valentine's Day or into March? We did for a long time.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was like March or April. We kept them, we kept them a long time. I, I would like to keep them as long as we can, maybe, you know, March or April. I think it's festive. You know, just, just with everything going on in the world, it's just enjoyable and beautiful and you know, we got a great, I think, got a great response to the lights this year. And I don't, I don't see any reason to take them down.
While it stays dark relatively, you know.
In the past, we were concerned about maintenance because we had those snowflakes or whatever the heck they were and they kept breaking. But I think this lighting is much more robust and we can safely leave it up a long time. I'm, I'm like in favor of that as well, as long as we, as long as we think, you know, be appropriate, March, mid-March, whatever.
When is daylight savings time? When, when does that?
Last third or fourth Saturday in March, maybe? I'm not real sure. But yeah, you get into March and it's, it's even before daylight savings, it's, you know.
Yeah.
Staying light, you know, a little later in the day, but.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess we just take off the, turn off the, did you already do the parks?
No, we're waiting for this. We're waiting for the discussion. It's March 14th is daylight savings.
Okay.
Perfect.
So March, yeah, March 1 or something.
That Scott would be willing to take down the Christmas lights at one point and leave up the white lights or the, at a different point and we can, I think that seems, seems good.
Yeah.
I mean, you may as well leave them up for St. Pat. I mean, you may as well leave them up for St. Patrick's Day, says the clerk whose birthday is on St. Patrick's Day.
Special request, huh?
Erin go bark, uh, dog parade. That, that might be kind of fun.
Oh, that's a good point. Okay. Maybe that's, I know that's when a lot of the restaurants hope to get back rocking and rolling as March to St. Patrick's Day, so.
That's when we closed down last year. We canceled the parade. That was the first thing the city did.
Well, well, maybe, maybe we should keep the lights up through St. Patrick's Day. I makes, you know, I'm good with anything council wishes, so.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
We're just looking for Scott's looking for some direction so he can take down the park, the, the, the decorations in the parks, including the big tree in Coughlin Park, you know, that's in our park. Yeah, he wants to get that one out of there, I think, especially while the weather's still good.
Yeah. What if we just say anytime after St. Patty's?
Yeah, yeah.
That works in his schedule.
So the parks, we're going to leave the lights in the trees. What about Mount Bald Head Star? Consider the park? You want to make an exception there? I kind of like it up there myself. What's that?
We didn't even know who turned it on. I mean, Nick and his group did the, the streetlights. Scott did the others. Somebody asked me, when did you turn on Mount Bald Head? I said, I didn't even know we did. So, uh, I think Scott's just would like to get the Christmas lights out of the way. Yeah, this month. And then we'll keep the, the Nick's, uh, streetlights until St. Patrick's Day. If that's okay with everybody.
Is that okay with them, the contractors, Chris?
Yes.
Hey, so where's that leave the star? Leave it up. The star is a symbol of hope and comfort.
Right now it is.
Use that. We can use that. Maybe just keep that up for now.
Yeah. And we can make a decision on that down the road, huh?
Good.
I, I just, I just really like the stars. And, and, and I get advantage because I'm coming back and forth across the, the, uh, Blue Star Bridge, so. And of course you can see it from the condos there too, I'm sure.
Yeah. You think while, while it's still dark, you know, while, while it's still dark, it's really nice that the light comes on and know about the middle of March and we start really getting some good daylight again in the evening.
Good. Okay. End of that discussion. Uh, moving on, again, another opportunity for the public to make comment if they so desire. So if you're out there and want to address council, uh, please ask to be recognized. Make your comments for three minutes and identify yourself and residence where you live. Anyone out there? Erin, see anyone?
I do not see anybody.
Okay.
Trying to get our.
Council comments before we adjourn. I, I've got one. I want to remind everybody to reserve next, uh, Thursday afternoon, four o'clock for a, uh, for a special meeting. We'll be going into closed, closed, uh, session. With our attorneys to discuss zoning issues. I would, uh, I have asked the attorney to, uh, for his input on this. And he gave me the, you know, that was okay to do. So I'd like to invite Ryan, our next city manager to this meeting to observe. He's going to be involved in this project probably as it's going to go, uh, several months and it has a potential to go on for a while. So if that's okay with everybody, um, I actually contacted him to see if he was available at next Thursday's meeting. I didn't dwell too much on what the topic was until I got the, you know, formal okay from the council. So I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and, and, and set that up. And if, uh, no other comments, uh?
Uh, I'd just like to thank Karen for going the extra mile again and getting that information on Mr. Schaefer. I thought that was really nice.
Well done, Karen.
It sounded like a pretty cool guy.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah. A, a, and Karen and I collaborated on a, collaborated on putting a letter. Sorry, Scott, we kind of didn't use your talents this time, but, uh, so we'll be sending a letter out to the, uh, exactly the, the trustee, thanking them on behalf of the city. So, uh, can I do a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Lewis, second by Peterson to adjourn the meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Thank you.